Welcome to the Norwood City Schools Board of Education meeting. Today is October 17th. This is our October regular board meeting. The Norwood City School District Board of Education follows a bi-monthly meeting schedule. The first meeting of the month is called our committee meeting. At this meeting, we fully discuss our agenda for the board meeting to be held the third Thursday of each month. As board members, we encourage you to attend, watch, and listen to our committee discussion resulting in action at the board meetings. For full disclosure, our committee meetings and board meetings are always announced, video and audio taped, as well as posted to our webpage for your view. All of our meetings are public and visitors are welcome. Mrs. Camp House, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Warza?
Present.
Mr. Atwood?
Present.
Ms. Ballard?
Present.
Mrs. Cole?
Present.
Mrs. Rayber? Absent.
I will ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance after, if you would mind remaining, standing for a moment of silence in honor and remembrance of Dr. Kathy Sabo.
My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.04 is the adoption of this evening's agenda. And before we get to that, I would like to just announce while we have a full house this evening, that we will be offering in memory of Dr. Sabo, the naming of the middle school auditorium, which was a building that Kathy loved so much, as well as the auditorium was a space that she felt a lot of pride in. And so, many of you may not be staying for that point, but we did want to recognize that while everyone was in attendance. Item 1.04 is the adoption of this evening's agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt, please?
All motion.
I'd like to, before that, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and take item 6.01 as a separate voting item instead of altogether.
Okay.
I'm sorry, 6.01.
That is the resolution to amend, to name the middle school auditorium in honor of Dr. Sabo.
So instead of doing 6.01 or two and three together, we're going to do 6.01 separately.
There's someone at the door.
I thought they were here for the board meeting.
So there's a motion on the floor?
I will second the motion. Amber?
Yes.
Mrs. Warza?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
I would then like to make a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
I'll second.
Mrs. Warza?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Item 1.05 is the approval of minutes from the regular meeting, September 19th, 2019.
We're going to order Madam President, we didn't finish 01.4.
We didn't finish what?
0.04. We have to motion and second. I started to motion, Brandon stepped in till we could move the other ones, so now we have to, yeah, fun.
We just did that.
We approved the thing?
Yeah.
I'm signing too many things. Alright, never mind, ignore me.
I threw everybody off jumping for the door.
Sorry. Never mind. Too many pages.
Okay, so we're looking to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, September 19th, 2019. Can I get a motion, please? Well, I think these are all one together. Well, we're just really...
1, 5, 6, 7.
Item 1.5, 1.06, special meeting, September 23rd, 2019 minutes. 1.07 minutes from the committee meeting in October, October 14th, 2019.
All motion.
I'll second.
It's just why we don't move stuff. Mrs. Warza?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Item 2 on the agenda this evening is presentations. Thank you, Mrs. Christine Chessen.
Sure, it's my pleasure to be here, and certainly our pleasure to congratulate and honor Brenda Newton for her retirement. So Brenda, will you come on down here? Give them a round of applause for Brenda. Let them see your crown. I think that's how you celebrate retirement. For 25 years, Brenda Newton has dedicated herself to Norwood City School District. 25 years. During that time, she has worked as a food service worker, a classroom aide, and a student assistant. Each and every day, she brought a sense of passion for her student success and genuine care for everyone in the building. Whether she donned an umbrella cap and guided students at the crosswalk on a rainy day, or grabbed a mop to clean up a spill, you always could count on her to lend a helping hand. While at Norwood, she created many lasting bonds with students, families, and staff. Her students could always count on her to be a listening ear and a calm voice. Teachers and principals were fortunate to have her selfless dedication and help anytime you asked. Norwood City School District is so proud and thankful for Brenda's many years of dedication and service. We miss her and wish her nothing but the best in her retirement. Congratulations, Brenda.
The board joins us in thanking you and congratulating you.
Congratulations, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next for our presentations, I'm happy to welcome our Norwood High School Orchestra. And tonight, Junior Lily Harlow is going to be saying a few words about the orchestra. Welcome, students. Come on down. They might take a moment to set up.
My name is Lily Harlow, and I have had the privilege of being a violist for Norwood Orchestra for five years. Not only that, but I've played in the Norwood Marching Band and play in a band in my own time. Music education to me is the backbone of what makes Norwood an incredible school. Getting to play an instrument in an inclusive educational environment without needing to pay thousands of dollars for it is a luxury that only some have. Through Norwood's music program, I have expanded my capability to understand and master whatever music I choose, something that I wouldn't have been able to without the help of the incredible music teachers in Norwood. Through Norwood's music program, I have traveled, made connections with some of my closest friends, and further understood myself as a musician and as a person, because music has given me and countless others a way to express ourselves past words and language. I am grateful for the opportunities given to me through Norwood's music program, and I hope that the music program can continue to leave a positive impact throughout the Norwood School District.
Thank you so much to our high school orchestra. Another special time during our meeting that I know our Board of Education really enjoys is our student rising stars. So in addition to the presentations where students are able to perform, we certainly like to celebrate our rising stars. And this evening, Norwood High School Principal Tina Akers will be introducing and announcing the rising stars.
Good evening, and I just wanted to say how proud I am of the orchestra. And thank you, you guys were great. So you are incredible. Thank you so much.[916.12][916.12](applause) It is an honor to be here to recognize these fine students from Norwood City School District. So tonight, when I call your names, if you would please come up to the front, from Norwood High School, Norwood High School's Rising Star Students for October are Uxmal Besserol Martinon and Andrew Paganlaboy.[943.25][943.25](applause) Uxmal has proved to be a star student this year. In class, Uxmal is a model student. He is always prepared, always doing what is expected of him, and he goes above and beyond with participating and helping others in the classroom. Not only does Uxmal know the importance of academics, but he also knows the importance of being a genuine person. His kindness and compassion for others is shown every day through his actions. Students like Uxmal make Norwood City School District incredible. Thank you.[984.57][984.57](applause) Andrew unfortunately is not here right now, but Andrew is a very respectful and polite student who is always, has a willingness to try. Teachers look forward to seeing Andrew in class every day because of his positive attitude. He currently does work at La Rosa's and continues to maintain all of his grades. He is motivated to complete his assignments and make sure he stays on top of all those assignments despite the many obstacles he may face. Andrew always shows Norwood pride. Students like Andrew make Norwood City School District incredible.[1022.73][1022.73](applause) Norwood Middle School's Rising Students for October are Andress Stout and Emmett Bowling.[1035.41][1035.41](applause)
Right next to him.
Norwood Middle School has nominated Andress Stout as the 7th grade October Rising Star. Ms. Kane says, "Andress is original and creative. As a student, he has solid reading and analytic skills that help him to be successful in every class. He is very consistent and works hard on each assignment. He asks awesome questions and is able to connect his learning to real life. He participates often in class and has a growth mindset. Additionally, Andress is always willing to help and has a great attitude. Andress loves riding his new bike that he received for his birthday and visiting his friends when he is not in school. He is proud to come from a family with a strong history of military service, and he is thinking about joining the Air Force when he gets older. He loves the friendly staff and students at Norwood Middle School and believes he is challenged enough without getting to the point of pulling his hair out. He is right where he needs to be," he says. "It is students like him that make Norwood City Schools incredible."[1124.23][1124.23](applause) Emmett Bowling is the 8th grade October Rising Star. Ms. Kubesh says, "I have nominated Emmett Bowling for his tremendous effort and pride in all that he does in my Spanish class. I admire his willingness to do more than he has been asked. Already, he has participated in two talk show interviews and treats his guests with the utmost respect. He demonstrates an exemplary conduct and integrity in my class. Emmett is very proud to serve as the 8th grade Student Council Representative as it gives him the opportunity to make changes and suggestions on behalf of his class. A little-known fact about Emmett, he has a lot of rhythm. Emmett is ranked in the top 400 in the US on the popular rhythm sequencing game, OSU Mania. Think Tetris for us older folks. Emmett appreciates all of the opportunities he has afforded at Norwood Middle School during the school day and after. Opportunities that help him to build up the courage to do the little things that help me big in the future," Emmett says. Emmett aspires to attend college just like his older brother has done, but hasn't settled on his career yet. It is students like Emmett that make Norwood City School District incredible."[1216.63][1216.63](applause) Sharpsburg Elementary and Primary Schools Rising Star Students for October are Annie Annie Havens is an exceptional student in many ways. Each day, she does her very best to master the skills that have been taught. Her homework is always completed on time. She follows the PAC's expectations and sets a positive example for her peers. She always has a smile on her face, and she quietly helps those who may be struggling. It is clear that Annie is going to continue to be a leader among her friends and classmates. Annie states that she likes her teachers because they are so funny, and she likes being in the elementary building because it is so big. Her favorite subject in school is reading. Her goals for the future are to read her whole Six Minute Solutions page, and she wants to learn more how to protect natural resources. Students like Annie make Norwood City School District incredible.[1301.13][1301.13](applause) Kenny Lewis is a caring 3rd grade student. He is always eager to help other students as well as teachers. We can always count on him to be a positive role model for others, especially when it comes to being kind, working well with others, and being responsible. Kenny loves learning new things and is usually the first student to raise his hand in order to participate. He enjoys coming to school each day, and you will always see Kenny with a smile on his face. Kenny's favorite subjects are math and gym, and his favorite things about Sharpsburg teachers are that they help him learn new things that he never knew before. School is such a fun and safe place for him to learn. Kenny's future goals are to graduate from high school and go to college to study and play football. It is students like Kenny that make Norwood City School District incredible.[1366.53][1366.53](applause) Norwood View Elementary Schools Rising Star Students for October are Brady Alexander Brady Alexander is a bright shining star in Norwood View's 2nd grade. Every morning, he greets his teacher with a smile. Brady is always willing to help his teachers. For example, he offers to wash tables all of the time and picks up the chairs and puts them on the desks at the end of each day. He does his best to be a problem solver and continues to build peace within the classroom. Brady is a wonderful role model academically because the other students can always see him working quietly, trying his best, and always asking questions. He comes to school prepared, eager to learn, and ready to be a great friend and student. Brady takes great pride in doing all of his work. As a result of this hard work, Brady is showing growth in all subject areas. Brady's favorite subject is writing, and he displays excellent handwriting skills. Mrs. Tovine, Mrs. Cosgrove, and Mrs. Russ could not be more proud to call Brady Alexander the Rising Star of the 2nd grade at Norwood View Elementary School.[1462.75][1462.75](applause) The 4th grade teachers at Norwood View have chosen Kylie Burns as their October Rising Star Student. Kylie is a wonderful student that exemplifies respect, commitment, and integrity. Kylie is very respectful to others. She is always willing to help classmates and is kind to everyone. Recently, Kylie went out of her way to help a friend interact with others on the playground. She spent her recess helping him learn how to play soccer so he wouldn't spend recess alone. Kylie also puts forth great effort when doing work in class. She has a strong desire to do well and is willing to put in the extra effort needed to be successful. She doesn't hesitate to ask questions when she doesn't understand the content being taught. Kylie's favorite subject is math because she loves to solve the difficult problems. Kylie is very kind and respectful to her teachers and other staff and students at View. We are very proud of Kylie. We know she will continue to work hard and be successful for many years to come. Students like Kylie make Norwood City School District incredible.[1539.86][1539.86](applause) Williams Avenue Elementary Schools Rising Star Students for October are Carrie Rarica Carrie Rarica is the 6th grade Rising Star for Williams Avenue Elementary. Carrie is a hard-working student who is also cheerful, positive, and kind. Her diligent attitude is contagious, and she has a calming influence on the people around her. She works very hard to meet her goals and always tries her very best in the classroom. She is helpful to others around her, including students, staff members, and especially her substitute teachers. We can always count on Carrie to be a PAC's leader who always works to the best of her ability. She is responsible in the classroom, staying focused on her work and her goals. She gives her best effort no matter the situation, and her hard work is impressive. She takes responsibility for her own actions and schoolwork, ensuring that she does the very best she always can. Carrie's favorite subject is art. When she grows up, she wants to be a photographer. When she is not creating art, Carrie likes to read at school. We are very proud to have Carrie as our Rising Star for October, and we know that she will continue rising to the challenge as she continues through the Norwood City School District.[1651.53][1651.53](applause) The 5th grade teachers nominate Caleb Whaley for the Rising Star at Williams Avenue Elementary. Caleb is also a PAC's leader in the classroom, recess, and in the lunchroom. He works hard to be an incredible role model for his younger siblings and the primary students in our school. During the heat wave, his family donated popsicles for the entire 5th grade to enjoy upon Caleb's request. It is so nice to have a student that cares about the well-being of his classmates. Caleb is also incredible at being extremely organized, punctual, polite, and an overall joy to be around. Math is Caleb's favorite subject because it is entertaining and he believes will help him become smarter. In the future, Caleb wants to play professional football as a guard. After his sports career, Caleb wants to become a chemical engineer and develop new medicines. He takes his learning seriously and is always ready to learn. Caleb thinks his teachers at Williams Elementary are incredible because they help him to learn and that this will lead him to success. We cannot wait to see how Caleb goes in his academic career, and he is indeed an example of a Rising Star. Thank you.[1742.41][1742.41](applause)
(inaudible)
At this time, we're going to ask all of our students, our Rising Star students and their families to follow Ms. Havlin out into our lobby. She would like to do some family photos. We'll take a short break to allow that to happen. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on in our agenda. Item three is the Education Committee Report. And this evening, item 3.01 will be the approval of field trips. As discussed at our committee meeting, we have Norwood View fifth grade would like to attend an overnight trip to Camp Campbell as their fifth grade end-of-year trip. We also have a trip this year for end-of-year elementary field trip at Williams for the sixth grade, as well as the Silhouettes Trip Proposal for the Carnival Cruise, which is a performance cruise for opportunities for them to perform, as well as enjoy the festivities on the cruise ship. If I could get a...
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on these items?
Mrs. Orson?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Item four is Personnel with Superintendent Recommendations. And I'm very happy to welcome Mrs. Mary Ronan for her first board meeting appearance. So, welcome, Mrs. Ronan.
Thank you so much, Madam President. On the recommendations this evening are the following items. Number one is Contract Services for the band camp. Number two are Extended Days for a Staff Member. Item three, Athletics. Four, Avenues for Success. Those are our Club Advisors. Five is Approving Our Technology Specialists. Six and seven refer to our Instructional Aides in terms of moving into the proper step. Number eight are our Mentors for our Teacher Residency Program. Item nine are Contracts for Our Coaches and Advisors. And Items 10 and 11, those concern moving staff to the proper step of the salary schedule. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to motion to approve these items.
I'll second.
Mrs. Orson?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
No.
Yes.
Mrs. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber?
Item five on the agenda is the Policy Committee Report with Mr. Brandon Atwood.
Thank you, Madam President. Originally, we did have a number of policy items to review, but in light of the month that we just had, we decided to move all of our policy recommendations to November. So, at this time, I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Atwood. Item six is the Buildings and Ground Committee Report with Mrs. Cole. But as suggested or as motioned at the beginning of the meeting, we will be separating out the resolution to rename the Middle School Auditorium in honor of Dr. Kathy Sabo. And at this time, I would like to read that resolution. A resolution to name the Norwood City... I'm not even going to get through the first line of it. I'll do my best, guys. A resolution to name the Norwood City School District Middle School Auditorium in honor of Superintendent Dr. Catherine Sabo. Whereas Catherine Sabo grew up in the Norwood City of Norwood and attended the Norwood City School District. And whereas Catherine Sabo graduated from Norwood High School and went on to attend Indiana Wesleyan University for her bachelor's degree, Xavier University for her master's degree, and Miami University for her doctorate. And whereas Catherine Sabo was hired by the Norwood City School District as a teacher for four years and later returned as principal of Norwood Middle School for nine years. Whereas Catherine Sabo was appointed Superintendent of the Norwood City School District on August 1st, 2017, and served until her passing on October 5th, 2019. Whereas the Norwood Middle School renovation was being completed under her tenure. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Norwood City School District Board of Education name the Norwood Middle School Auditorium located at 2060 Sherman Avenue as the Dr. Catherine Sabo Auditorium in honor of Dr. Sabo for her many contributions to the education and well-being of Norwood's children and the Norwood community. I'll motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Mrs. Orson?
Yes.
I would like a moment of discussion, if at all possible. Sam, I can make either. I would love for this to take place in coordination with our holiday concert this year. Music was one of Kathy's absolute favorite things. To have it be this space is not only an honor, but I feel like we owe it to her to have it in conjunction with a concert.
Mrs. Orson?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
We'll move on to items 6.02 and 6.03. Mrs. Cole?
Thank you, Madam President. For your consideration, item 6.02 is a request to use the facility. The U.S. Postal Service is requesting Playground at Allison for Temporary Employee Parking, which starts tomorrow, I believe, Friday, October 18th through October 21st, from 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. That's a Level C request. And then, item 6.03, as discussed, is to revoke the Hydra Facility Agreement for the swimming.
I'll motion.
I'll second. Any discussion on these items that hasn't already been discussed at committee? Okay.
Mrs. Orson?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Item seven is the Finance Committee Report with our Treasurer, Mrs. Julie Camp House.
Thank you, Madam President. Norwood's financials for September were better than expected due to a revenue received in September that was due last year. On the Agenda 7.01, the financial reports are attached to the Agenda for your review and approval tonight, including the CFO Report, Change Order Spreadsheets, and the Enrollment Report. 7.02, Proposal for Appraisal. This appraisal is a result of a commercial property owner filing a complaint in the Board of Tax Appeals. We will use the appraisal to prove the valuation set by the Board of Revisions. 7.03, Permanent Appropriations. This is our budget for the current year. 7.04, Memorandum of Understanding. This MOU covers services provided to the district from Talbot House. 7.05, Certificate of Substantial Completion. This certificate does not indicate the end of construction at our middle school, but the end is near. Monarch is making good progress through the punch list items. 7.06, Donations. A nice donation from School Outfitters, a Norwood company that partners with our school district, and a $50 gift card donated to the staff annual vendor fair. 7.07, A Resolution of Exempt and Administrative Severance. This will modify our current agreement to allow severance to be paid for death as well as retirement. 7.08, Authorized Treasurer to Open an escrow Account. I'll be opening an escrow account with PNC for our Century Construction Contract. 7.09, Then Announced Certificates for Your Approval. And that's all I have.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7.01 through 7.09.
I'll second.
We do need an effective date on 7.07, if the Board would like to recommend that.
That is, you are correct. I'd like to make a motion to recommend a date of July 1st.
Thank you.
2019.
Mrs. Orson?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Item eight is the Hearing of the Public. To further improve communication between the community and the Board, time shall be allotted at each regular or special board meeting to hear public and/or representatives of school-related organizations. Public participation at committee meetings is limited to those invited to speak on specific issues. Each person addressing the Board should fill out a form listing name, address, and the agenda or non-agenda item, hand the form to the Board President. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the Board, and no more than 15 minutes will be devoted to any one topic unless a majority of the Board votes to continue the discussion. Speakers may offer such objective criticism of school operations as concerns them. However, the Board will not hear personal complaints of school personnel or complaints against any person connected with the district. Concerns and comments about individuals should be brought to the attention of the administration. Were there any submits this evening? Okay. Well, we'll move on to our reports. Item 9.01 is Board Announcements. And if I may, just offer a bit of gratitude to our leadership team for getting us through these past few weeks seamlessly. So Christina, and Shannon, and Julie, and Mary, we are very thankful for your guidance. And I know your friend would be very proud of you. So, thank you. Any other announcements? Item 9.02 is the Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Ronan?
Thank you. This is some good news. I wanted to remind the public that our own Leila Kubesh was named Ohio Teacher of the Year. And I know all of us were there when the state superintendent, Paula DiMaria, came down and honored her here in Norwood. But I wanted to let the public know, it is on our website, the entire presentation. But that's really not the end of it. On this Tuesday, October 15th, Leila was invited to Columbus to actually be presented by the State Board of Education an award and did just an incredibly impassioned speech. And I do have some pictures that we will show in just a minute. But I also wanted to say, Leila has now been invited to be a Speaker at the Ohio School Boards Association Conference on November 10th. She is going to be the General Session Speaker, which is the most important speech. And she's also going to be there on Sunday afternoon speaking. So, it's just so wonderful that she's getting all these accolades. And I do have several pictures from our trip to Columbus. But I feel badly, I know people will have to move to actually see them. There's just three pictures.
Those are eleven members of the State Board of Education and the ten finalists, and Leila, the winner. And that is Dr. Judy Kilgore, who was our District Four State Board Representative, who actually ran and presented Leila with her award. And there's the entire group of them. So, it is very exciting. It's a fabulous honor to be a member of Norwood.
She was also recognized at the Southwest Regional Conference about a week ago. And we were able... Ms. Chesson and I were there and we were able to accept the award on her behalf. She was working with another family, doing all the great work that she does. So, she's been getting accolades left and right. We're so proud of her.
Indeed. And I also would like to announce, you know, this past week, the 2019 Distinguished Alumni Hall of Fame winners were for... It was Philip Myers, Class of 1959, Cheryl Gay, Ph.D., Class of 1965, John Mark Talent, Class of 1965, and Rick Scott, Class of 1968. And they were all inducted a week ago. So, congratulations to our distinguished alumni. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Item 9.03 is the Avenues for Success Report. I do not have an Avenues for Success Report. But I do know that clubs have started. And if you have not yet registered, you may still register. So, you can seek out Mrs. Faust or Mrs. Ferguson and they will get you registered. And there are really exciting and great clubs happening at all of our buildings. And you had something?
I do have something. So, just was notified that tonight, our varsity volleyball team, which is playing in the state tournament, just beat Merrymont three games to one. So, they will play Claremont Northeastern Saturday at 11:00.
That's great. They are an awesome team. If you haven't seen them, they're so fun to watch. They have so much energy and they're just good. Really good. Really good.
That's great.
Item 9.04 is the Legislative Report. And Mrs. Raiber is not here this evening because of work. And I don't have her report. So, we can move on. Item 10 is Meeting Notifications. Approval of Future Meetings. Our committee meeting for November would be November 12th, 2019, 5:30 at the Board Office, 2132 Williams Avenue. And our regular board meeting to be held November 21st, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. right here in the mini auditorium at the high school, 2020 Sherman Avenue. I'll motion to approve the future meetings listed.
I will second.
Mrs. Orson?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
We have no items moved for separate considerations. So, that puts us at number 12, which is Executive Session. In accordance with ORC 121.22-G1, the Appointment, Employment Dismissal, Discipline, Promotion, Demotion, or Compensation of a Public Employee or Official, or the Investigation of Charges or Complaints Against a or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual.
I'd like to make a motion that we enter into Executive Session.
I'll second. Mrs. Orson?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.